She won't be hanging over by herself.
You know.
Brian at six? Should I?
Yep.
All meetings to a work session to order? Stanford pledge or?
You bet.
Okay. Anybody would like to stand for a pledge? Okay. A pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for having tonight's, and I will turn this over to Brian. Just to remind you that this is a work session, so there's not open dialogue during this.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We have a lot, lot of items. Tracy, I'm gonna ask you just to try to keep us, you know, when we get about halfway done, just to see where we're at on our topics. The agenda, what's at the agenda, folks, there's, and you'll notice that there's about twenty-six different handouts that you have. Just walk through the agenda, just reading through. And you guys eat, the first probably fifteen, twenty minutes will be stuff I'll be walking through. And then we'll get into, once we hit world's best workforce in some of those things. So we'll walk through, in your packets, it should be right in order, everything on enrollment, financial information, and then we'll hit world's best workforce, and then all of the site administrators. Mary Ann, special ed, everybody will be taking over that component. And we'll go through the plan for the admin staffing. We'll go through the staffing needs based on retirements and movement and leaving the district, they should say. And then program expansion requests, which the board will deadact on, on Monday's next regularly scheduled board meeting. And then last, almost last, facilities, and then some updates with that. And we'll go into a little bit more as far as what's coming in April, when Terry's up working with the board. And then, just so that we can know where we're at for sure on preschool, and then timelines on bond election and calendar. So lots of things that are in the packets. So first, again, there's gonna be things here tonight that are gonna be reviewed for, in particular, those of you board members that are, have been serving prior to January. But this is, you know, Sandy and I were discussing, this is a perfect time to make sure that everybody has that same information. And when we hit into these, this is where we want whatever questions in dialogue or you guys on talks, because this is, there's no action tonight. This is your work session, but to look at, okay, what we've got and what the plans, the tentative plans are for things. So the numbers are the same as far as, the first thing in your handout is March enrollment numbers. So the March enrollment numbers, you worked at, you looked at those at the last board meeting. Currently, and really what the hope is, is that unlike this past year, we're not gonna be losing kids over the summer. And we've gone through that at the last meeting, last couple of meetings, that this past year was the first time that we've seen such a drastic drop over the summer that had a pretty good effect on the revenue for this year, from the original budget to the revised budget. Now, assuming that we're not seeing that, and if you remember back from, you know, looking at the different months, and again, as board members, you have this document. You all have access to the enrollment one, and Brooke updates it on the same document. So you could take a look month after month to see, did we have much movement going on from the beginning of the year until now? So that we can predict, does it look like we've got some trends that are happening? We've been fairly stable. If you go back to, and you don't have this one, but I'm just gonna pull it up real quick, it's after January. So in January, the overall total numbers for K-12 students was sixteen thirteen. So March, where are we at? Right now, sixteen? Sixteen eighteen. That's a good sign. So the overall student numbers back in, again, January was sixteen thirteen, overall sixteen eighteen now. One of the issues is the makeup of those numbers, because we're gaining on the elementary, but we're losing on the secondary. So remember, we got 1.2s on people units. So that's the same thing. So if you look at January, the total amount of weighted ADMs, seventeen thirty-seven. What is it right now?
Seventeen forty.
So, so we're maintaining, which is good. Why that's important is because the next one is on student enrollment, trying to do some estimating on what we should have for next year. And this is where I'm gonna look for some input for the board from the elementary principals on what we're seeing, because again, on this one, this again is an estimate. You have it in your packet, what we're estimating. It's assuming that we're not losing kids going from grade to grade. We do have retentions, we know always takes place kindergarten to first grade. Okay? So knowing that, and Peg, Dilworth Elementary is looking at approximately, how many retentions?
Eight.
Okay? And so that's, that's not, you know, that's fairly typical from when you guys look at those history of what we've seen in that trend data. Glendon Felton Elementary, we're looking at how many?
Three to five.
Three to five. Okay? So we update then, trying to predict, and working with Roseanne, I mean, this is, Roseanne and the elementary principals, the leadership at the primary, they're the ones we're gonna know. Are these, are these soft numbers? Absolutely. They're soft numbers. We go back and forth many years as far as on the last few years, you know, some years we're sitting with two sections, some with three at the Glendon site for kindergarten. We've been pretty consistent with five sections at the Dilworth Elementary site. Because we've been running nineties to low one hundred and so on. So again, this is an assumption. Notice, this is built right now with the idea of three sections at Glendon Felton Elementary kindergarten. That's if. We know that we have two retirements of people that have elementary background. We've advertised for elementary positions, multiple ones. We don't know yet for sure how many, whether we will have the replacing votes or not, because what if we go down to two sections? At Glendon, what if we're down, what if we're at forty? Because the current enrollment, and you can see from the agenda, on two D, you'll see the present numbers registered, and that is from a document that the, that the two elementaries' offices have been maintaining. So as kids register, and whether they're open enrollment or not, as they put the packets in and they're looking at coming, they're all sharing that information. Roseanne is seeing it, and both of the sites. So these are the numbers right now. Dilworth Elementary's at seventy-six, Glendon Felton Elementary's at thirty-six for next year's kindergarten at this time of the year. Now, is that?
About seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine, so they're gonna change that quickly. Okay?
In Glendon, actually, there's five kids I know of that have not turned in their papers yet. Couple Head Start kiddos, couple other ones. Been watching for them to come in, but it's families that have had kids through the programs that we know are typical. We're gonna have those last minute registrations from.
So you said five?
I know of five, yeah. Three children that are in our school readiness program. We know they're there. We know they're coming, but those registrations aren't coming in.
And we're gonna have to follow on the list that we're trying to get help again. We have either phone number or address, they're not, being on deliverable. So we have, unless we follow on our list.
And two of those for sure are Head Start.
Questions you guys have, board members? On this, because this is a big, this is a big piece in that prediction part. You know, as far as trying to, trying to figure out how many positions and how close and how long do you wait to make those decisions? You know, to be safe, we typically, you know, do you start conservatively and say, okay, we're gonna go with five and two or four and two for kindergarten and wait to see? Do you hire, bring people in later? Do you lose candidates when you do that? You know, those are some of the issues. Now, the other thing that's an issue, and from my perspective, just again, when you think of all these topics that you've got as board members and for the work session tonight. So you have the open enrollment process. Five oh nine point two on the lottery. Okay? We continue by policy to keep accepting open enrollments until we hit one forty-five, priority two, one fifty-five, priority one. If the resident parents, the longer they wait, the more likely that when they, if they wait until August, we may already have a hundred and fifty-five. Their kids are gonna be in, they can't be denied. But all of a sudden, we've got more than a hundred and fifty-five kids in there because we can't do anything about cutting it off, because at the time, we had to accept them because we weren't at one fifty-five or one forty-five limits. So that's why, and we've had this discussion, principals and Roseanne, as far as trying to encourage people, and the more that the public understands this, to encourage them, get the paperwork in. Because it can help keep, if they truly wanna keep the limits down to one fifty-five and one forty-five. Get the paperwork in, because then the ratios will be a little bit better. Because we have to keep accepting any resident ones if they wait until the end. And we're not at those limits, we have to keep taking open enrollees. Make sense? So that's unless you're gonna change policy, you can say a deadline. Again, those are some things over the summer, you gotta just think about with your whole open enrollment. Any other questions for the elementary principals or Roseanne regarding the numbers we're predicting? You notice, again, right now, if we assume three sections for kindergarten, and with these numbers, five sections first grade, three sections first grade at Glendon, Dilworth, five sections and three, you guys all have this, but I'm just going through it for everybody else that's here tonight. Four and two at grade three, four and two at grade four, and then grade five, six sections. That would be identical amount of sections as we have right now, twenty-three and eighteen. So the only openings would be the ones created by internal, internal retirements. Okay? Any other questions on that one? Otherwise, I'm gonna move on to some of the open enrollment. Just again, some of these things are reviewed. Trend data. You guys all have copies, there should be three copies of the trend data. We'll put it on the screen for all the guests. And again, pretty hard for them to read this stuff, pretty much impossible from distances. But we have been tracking this all along, since I've been here. We keep track of the total enrollment served, so that you as a board and us administratively can look to see what's happening with grade levels. Are we losing kids as they get older? Are we gaining kids? Are we seeing any changes with that? So you have three different sheets. You have the overall total enrollment. You have the residents served. And you have the open enrollment served. A lot of these things we have covered before, but as I said, with, with the full board, the existing board, we've never been able to sit down and answer questions and see if people have anything that jumps out on any of those three. Don't hurry, you've got time. This becomes very important for us as we, you notice, as we were going through the negotiations process with Morehead, trying to track where are the open enrollees. We have tracked the amount of open enrollees that live on the east end of Dilworth. Why it's important? Because as these different locations transfer into our district as part of the boundary adjustment, these kids become resident based on location. Which also then affects our community ed revenue. Tracy's smiling on that one. Yeah, this is, because remember, when you think about the fact that about one-third of our kids do not generate any money for community ed, but they definitely utilize our community ed. So we will be working with the state of Minnesota. It's always a year behind, for those of you that, you know, are not aware of this. It's always a year behind on, on making any changes on your census. Typically, you have to wait until any state censuses and national censuses are done. Because our community ed is based on the population, not just the student population. So all those homes become residents, some are what and such. It's our resident population that generates community ed funds. So we will be submitting to the state updated numbers based on county census data that we have in those zones. And we couldn't do it, we talked about this before back last fall, we couldn't do it until the boundary adjustment was actually completed by board action. So then everything took place in July. We have to make these changes in May. And submit them so that the state can do it for June, and then they'll give that information to the county and then readjust coming in for community ed. Okay? Scott?
Looking at that, I know it's kind of issued that about the nostalgia we've had, I thought about the numbers. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, seven-five, three grade at Dilworth site next year, we're gonna be pushing some pretty high numbers. You know, I don't know if there's one money in budget two, if there's any creative solutions or anything like that? Because at this point, I mean, we're, we're kind of even par with some of our ed schools that have those numbers, which is probably not.
You're talking grade three and grade four, seven?
Yeah, well, I mean, I know grade three now is obviously large, grade four this year isn't, but next year, you know, a hundred and four kids spread amongst four teachers.
Same thing. Yeah, it's the same thing, the third grade's doing this year.
Yep. And then there will be, is there anything creative there, or is there?
Well.
That's what I have.
Well, we'll, we'll look at that with the maps, I mean, because it comes down to, there's some, there's some things you guys can talk about as far as you wanna put certain things on cart, you wanna put preschool out of the building. You've got those as options as a school plan. You wanna free up some spaces. And then the cost. So that's why, you know, what all, the first things I'll go through is all of the enrollment data, then come on up. And then you guys can, then you've got the basis of moving forward with the discussions. And again, you're not gonna be taking any action tonight anyway, but at least you can start thinking about how you want to make, what you wanna do with some of these things. And have open dialogue about it when you know that you're not, it's not an action item.
Are we in any way of a request of finishers that?
April.
Okay, but are we gonna go for back and forth, like if people have a question for different furniture, the classroom will be at stake? Are we gonna go with that this evening?
No, that'll be in April, because we'll, March, remember, March is personnel. And then the requests that are coming in from the principals and the sites is all coming in now at the end of the month, and then April, we'll be dealing with that. So that's their timeline as far as getting everything in, and then we'll sit down with operations and go through all of the, okay, what's the capital request? And what's the budget that we can have for? So April, we'll be hitting everything with capital, and then that's plenty of time to be able to get the things ordered. You know, because typically, we order the stuff in the spring, and just like with computers. So if we get the stuff done in April with capital, we're, we'll be fine. Problem is when the things don't get done in, in the spring, like our lockers, and all of a sudden, we don't get them ordered until Fourth of July, it creates a problem.
When do we set up, go through which classes get which classrooms? I mean, is there some creative rearranging that we can do with that? When we took some tours of the school, there was a few of us that did that. You know, just going through, you know, I don't, if there's ways that we can rearrange without getting a little bit smaller classes, like the media center here in Glendon for that elementary, the computer lab. That's a nice giant space that could be used for a classroom if we could work with the kindergarten K through second grade and replace or moving those computers to where they need, in a different space, or coming here and using these instead of having two computer centers that are fully utilized. When do we go through that?
The principals, all of the, you know, some of this stuff is also based on the requests that they're asking. Remember, you've got requests tonight for adding personnel. You're gonna be, you're in discussion, you're, you're gonna get that information. So part of this is also, you gotta, we, we've gotta know which of those things are gonna be approved. Because once we know what things are gonna be approved, improved, added on, once we know that, then we know how many spaces we gotta come up with, how creative to be. And then, and that's why one of the discussion topics is preschool. What are we doing with it? Because all these things are factors in spaces. I, I can tell you that, I know that the, well, at, building principals. Give some insight. What, what process are you guys doing? I know that Heidi and, and Peg and Mary Ann have all been talking about, again, we're not going to, you know, they have to be able to sit down once, once we get to that point of knowing what's approved, where they'll sit down and, okay, what kind of space do we need for what programs?
So once we get that, then Peg and Mary Ann and I usually sit down and say, what can we do, where can we move things? We usually do that after we find out what our staffing's going to be for the next year.
Okay.
Which will be soon.
And that's why we wanna get, because really, when we talk about the capital stuff, you know, it's a great question, Lindsay, when you brought, you know, as far as the capital in general. The problem is, we can't figure out the capital until we know if we're gonna be redoing rooms. And we don't know necessarily how we're gonna redo the rooms until we know what personnel's hired.
Many of us are similar, thinking, ask, most people are not very comfortable with the few of the grades. So they're looking at some of those individuals, you know, that, you know, you have a solution for two teachers, we say we're gonna add two teachers. I mean, is there something that we can come up with that they're at that site? And then you'll need to, at the Glendon site, I know it looks like right now, next year, we're gonna have a pretty large third or fourth grade at school. Is there any solutions that we can add staff to, to take care of without being asked to enroll? If that's, if it's our city to add staff, and if we say we're gonna add staff, is there a viable solution?
Are you?
Yeah.
Because right now, right now, we don't have any requests coming forward to you as a board as far as adding that. Right now, all the requests have been about program expansion, special ed. You got special ed speech, and, and you've got, you know, there's basically probably three spaces right now. If you're gonna move preschool out, or if we're going, if you want, you know, at the next board meeting, if, if, if the board says tonight, we really want to discuss at the next meeting, to add and go to one more section, and at least through grade three, that's an easy one to have a discussion about tonight. And you can get some general ideas on, here's the cost, and here's what you're probably gonna be looking at. You've got some options. But part of the options are also gonna be, that's why we have the maps. When we hit the maps, I think then you can start, okay, looking at some of this stuff. But we'll give you the economics first, where we're at, and then you've got time. I mean, you can go down that road if you want, as far as, if you want to make some decisions. Through grade three, we wanna have at least keeping these ratios here. And it's easy to figure out the cost. I mean, you figure basically sixty thousand per person. So if you're gonna add one more section of both grade threes, sixty thousand. You wanna go to grade four, sixty thousand per classroom, as far as staff costs.
So what is our target, as a principal, what's this grade number, what, what are you shooting for twenty, twenty-two? It's like in the hundred and eighty. You had your ideas, you're going to be putting in cost, everybody get on board.
Well, I mean, just, I, I, I knew this, I'd love to know what your guys' teaching waiting rate is.
Yeah. I would love to have a conversation with the current third grade teachers this year. Because I think they've done a phenomenal job with what's been put in front of them as far as how many kids they've had in each classroom. I, I think they've done an amazing job. Sometimes there's only so much they can do when there's twenty-six kids in front of them with different personalities and different spectrums, and what kind of families they're coming from. I feel as though if we have that many kids in a classroom, and our kids are failing, and they're not failing, but they're lacking in their duties and the basics, then we're really not doing what we should be doing in us. We're failing our kids, and we need to look at smaller class sizes. And that's why people wanna come to DJF, is because we can hopefully offer that. I would just love to talk to the third grade teachers and, you know, get a picture of them and how it's gone, and how they feel as you're gone. I'd love to hear that. They've just had such a big class to deal with, indeed.
We will, and that sounds common, we say, of course, every teacher prefers small class sizes. You know, I don't have any cluster, if we achieve more, you know, but. And it's one of those, for me, I realize it's, it's sixty thousand per person, but what's it gonna cost to renovate the space, those kinds of things? And that's why, you know, we're up to, you know, that, or that. Is there a possibility to do it in our current facilities? If so, where, and what are some of those dollars, what's it gonna be built of? Sometimes it just, it's not on the card, sometimes it is. I'd love to leave, but everything's gonna cost fair amount.
And that's why, again, you, when you, when you see the requests coming in, the next ones, and six and, and so on, you know, part of it is, you need to know the economics of where we're at. So, you know, the next thing on the agenda, after the, before we hit into three, the boundary adjustment process, let me just, again, you know what's coming. We don't see anything else on the boundary. But again, the board itself, this board has not had time to just talk about. And if there's any questions in particular that you have regarding the process of the transference and, and how this is gonna work. So otherwise, I'll just walk through it quickly, and if there, everybody is up to speed. So otherwise, I'll just walk through it quickly and if there, everybody is up to speed, just go thumbs up, done, and we move on. But, so right now, we know that the stuff that was in the green, the blue, was the stuff that was transferred. The blue doesn't show as, oh yeah, it does, from an angle, it doesn't as much. Uh, that stuff transferred all July 1st, 2016. So the stuff that's left to transfer is the stuff on the east end of Dilworth, all that Woodbridge area. There are a total of six zones. They will transfer as some of the properties that we transferred to Morehead develop and increase the net tax capacity. Um, which we know some of that will happen as the commercial property, the TIF zone, is done. So again, the commercial property along Highway 10, between County Road 9 and 34th. On the south side, all that commercial property in that area is not, it's in a TIF zone. So that will, the TIF zone will come off 2021 or so, and then we will see a net tax capacity gain. The Morehead will realize and that will be timing that we will be seeing some of these, some of this transference happen. And if any of the other stuff gets developed, it can be soon. But 2021, we know that we will start seeing some of that Woodbridge, some of those zones transferring into our district. And we've got that set order, exactly how it is, it's on the website, all that stuff is still there. You got any questions on that process at all, or you, you good? So you have more time to, to dwell into the what ifs as far as where we're gonna move people and, and tear down walls. Everybody good? I'm, I'm really looking for the newbies and Raleigh, Lindsay, Amy.
I think you studied a lot.
Good. Good, I think, uh, okay. So what it does get though is that next one on, one thing, uh, that, the next two pieces on two statewide enrollment options form. Um, just to make sure that everybody understands it because, again, you as board members, and we've had some discussions administratively, um, the fact that these things come up and it creates some issues. So the statewide enrollment, one of the questions that comes up from people, let's say somebody moves housing. And we've seen that Christmas, remember, we talked about this one right before, we, uh, back in November, December. So if someone is moving in mid-year, what are the options if they move out of the district? If their kids, so they've been resident population, their, their family moves outside the school district. So they have to open enroll, they've never been an open enrollee, they've never been approved through the process. We have to go to the lottery, we have to go to the process, what are the limits? So we had a family already go through this. The option for the school district, in law, in statute, is that we can set up a non-resident agreement with that particular district, every district we have to do it with individually with districts. So we did that with Morehead. And that worked so that that family, their kids, can finish up the year. Next year, this coming fall, they have to fill out open enrollment forms and if we're still beyond that limit, they have to be denied enrollment. Okay, they got to finish the year, but if they don't move back into the district and we're at the limits, they're out because they have not, remember, the non-resident agreement does not grandfather in open enrollment. It's just for the year, finish it. And I can tell you this right now, um, I already received a request already, somebody else moving out, both parents moving to Morehead. So again, they'll finish the year, but it includes grades where we have hit 150s. So they'll finish the year and that's where they're, unless the policy changes. Okay, so, and this comes up in the, with the admin assistants in the offices a lot. Cause most, it's not in our policy. It's not in our policy on 509 on open enrollment because it's in the form. The question always comes up and admin assistants, uh, get asked the question, they get phone calls from parents. And so just so that you know as a board member also, if someone moves location, let's say they live in Morehead, they bought, sell their house, they buy a new house in Morehead, do they have to fill out another open enrollment form? No, they do not, they don't lose their spot. They're already accepted for open enrollment, all they have to do is call the office and update their location. Once you've been accepted for open enrollment, you're in, as long as you have continuous enrollment. Even if you move, somebody could move from Holling to Barnesville to Morehead to Fergus Falls. And if they want their kids to continue coming the whole time, they can do it, as long as it's continuous. Okay, so, real quick one on that. Now, financial, which is kind of important for the questions that you want to be able to ask. All right, so the first one is the audited general fund information. This is a pretty important one. And this is one of those that as board members, I hope you keep handy when people ask you questions. This is direct from audited information. And why it's important is because it's the foundation on how the state does their comparisons. Um, the days of where one school district codes a person to this one and one codes it differently and it's apples to oranges, it's pretty much gone, that was the reason we have UFRS. Unified Financial Accounting Record System. It's pretty important because, so when Mary Ann's figuring out everything, special ed, Roseanne's figuring out things, early childhood and so on and so forth. They wanna know that every school district is coding that personnel into those particular areas so they can get apples to apples comparisons. Now, this is for DGF, our revenue. So I want you as board members to be able to see and, and if you take a look and you compare our revenue and our expenditures by audited information in the general fund. The general fund is where we do all of our K-12 instruction. Tracy's stuff is Fund 4, Community A. Fund 1 is where the big numbers are. This is the basis of can we do this financial on purpose? Okay, so if you take a look at our revenue on a yearly basis, our total revenue, how it's changed. So you can see that fiscal 11, 12 million, eighty-one thousand and all the way to fiscal 16, which is the last audited year. We're in fiscal 17 now, sixteen seventeen. Fifteen million, five ninety-six, based on the audit that was done and presented to you for board approval last September. So you can see the percentage of increase of the total amount of money and of course, a lot of these things are based on our pupil units. So in the comparison, we always use our Mars numbers, our October 1st numbers. So you can see, and this is when, when you go to the state's website and you see the comparison on the, the amount of cost per pupil unit. When you can compare every district in the state of Minnesota, this is what they're doing. Now, expenditures, you can see that your total cost for every one of those, whether it be administration, whether it be district support services, regular instruction, vocational, there's certain ones that have vocational instruction that has to be coded a little bit different because of the funding streams. So you can see the percent of the increase we've seen, fiscal fifteen was really good on the revenue. But again, part of the reason with such a big change on the revenue, take a look at the increase in the amount of pupil units. We went from fifteen seventeen pupil units, or pupils, I shouldn't say pupil units, total amount of pupils to fifteen ninety-two. That's a lot. And that's why we saw such a huge increase in our revenue. Cause it's the foundation aid, the basic aid. Now, hand in hand with that one is the next one and I'll refer back and forth as you ask whatever questions you may have regarding it. This is aid levy report. Again, that gives us a great countdown. And why it's important is, in this financial one in F, you know, as I talked about the legislative session and projected impact. Well, when we get over here to fiscal seventeen and fiscal eighteen, remember, the levy, you've already set the levy for fiscal eighteen. You proved that in December. Sixteen payable seventeen. So that's affecting next year's budget as a school district. The aid is estimates based on pupil units. Now, if you're keeping track of those emails that are coming from MREA, you'll notice that the governor is talking about a two percent increase. That two percent increase is on the foundation, is on the basic aid. That basic aid is that eleven million. Again, basic ad aid, it's line three on here for us, or row three, I should say. If it's a two percent increase, just take two percent, two percent of the eleven million, two hundred and twenty thousand. And start looking at, you got the breakdown from the previous, again, going back to the audited material. You can see exactly the cost of regular instruction, administration and so on and so forth. You know how much you have coming in general aid. If the amount of enrollment is identical, and that's what really has hit us this year. If we had our typical fifty, sixty extra kids, that helps offset why we can be making it on two percent increases or one percent increases from the state and handing out threes or fours on increases. Because we have more money coming in than just the amount of students, the two percent is only on the existing students. But what if our amount of students doesn't change? Base ad aid, two hundred and some thousand. Now start looking at your expenditure budget and seeing the cost on personnel, cause it's personnel. That's your cost, I mean, that's your big part. Put three percent on it. This is without adding any personnel. Does that help at all as far as when you start? I mean, we all either own a business or you work for somebody and you have your own budgets at home.
Is there a projected number again this year? Sixteen eighteen, correct?
Yes.
Is that plus five or plus five by whole?
That's the existing right now. Projected. So again, this is, you know, you're, you're seeing some of this stuff together for the first time as a group. Because we haven't had this as an issue where, what if we start stabilizing on the enrollment numbers? This was the first year that we've hit where the fall enrollment did not go up. We all want to make the working conditions as good as possible. And keep this student-teacher ratios as low as possible. You as a board are the ones who have to make a decision whether you can do that fiscally. It's my job to get you the numbers. Questions on these numbers, far as understanding of, I mean, just in, if there's things, when you look at these sheets, because again, you don't have an action item with this stuff tonight. But part of the work session is to have time to ask the questions that when you go back home and review the information. And this is a big one. And we can spend whatever time you need on the fiscal.
Okay, I give over the point of course doing the difference of that, well, that came from five and was in that seven. It was about a sixty-six thousand dollar deficit from last year, not including the two percent of these states, which are pretty close. But that's also not increasing that two percent probably for staff.
Correct.
So we're probably at that, even after the financials.
Assuming that we are, if, if, yeah, and, and are we going with the assumption that the cost of living increases are going to be linked to the amount of money coming in from the state, is that? And again, that's, you guys have to.
Yeah, I would have the number four, I mean, the border bar is, is where I was coming from.
And again, that's, you got negotiations coming up, you're not gonna, you know, just, but again, just keep it in mind. You know what, you know the things you've gotta deal with as a, as a school board. You got requests for increasing staffing. You know you've got compensation things to address. And you've gotta make decisions on the balance sheet. This is the one time Brian's, doesn't have to be the bad guy in this thing. But Brian has to tell, show you the information. Or I'm not being, I'm not doing my job if I'm not showing you that. I can honestly tell you that this is a tougher process since I've been here. Because of that change in the numbers a little bit, that we have not, we've been lucky. We've done a lot of things. And we've had some things to be able to work with, the benefits and what else now, but remember, we've made changes to the benefits, most take advantage of the benefits now, which is a good thing, cause we want to give good benefits to people. Want to give good compensation, but there's a price with all this stuff. So any questions as far as understanding, interpreting any of these that have been presented? Whether it be the general fund audited information, levy aid report, these, the expenditure average. Um, we have, this one's important, this is the expenditure average daily membership, it's the cost of what we're doing. I think this one's always important for board members because you're always hit up by somebody is gonna ask, are we overstaffed in something? This is from the state, this is based on the audited information. And we've run, and again, anybody can go to the MDE site and pull up this stuff. Um, it's a lot of data and, and so I pulled it up and grabbed it from different school districts, all of them in our county and some of our surrounding school districts, DGF, Barnesville, State Average, Detroit Lakes, Holling, Morehead, Elkin Rapids, Permian, Interdell. Every, all of our stuff, it's a full breakdown that we all have to do through UFRS. And you can see the comparisons. Overall, DGF out of all of those, the state average in total cost per pupil. Overall, D G F out of all of those, the state average in total cost per pupil unit. State average is eleven thousand, eleven dollars. D G F eighty-six ninety-three. The only one out of Barnesville, D L, Holly, Morehead, Pelican Rapids, Permian, Inarado. The only one lower than us in total cost per pupil is Holly by fifty dollars. And the difference, transportation per student at D G F is five fifty-three. Holly is two ninety-three. So when the populace asks you, are you overstaffed? This is from the state. You're not. Administration is always one that comes up from people. D G F, district administration, three oh five, it's a lowest. School administration, the state average, five oh one, everybody else, Morehead's three twenty-eight. More, bigger yard, usually you can be more efficient on that. School admin, so at the principal level, we're three eighty-six. Um, Holly's three twenty, everybody else is above. You got the data. So again, I think it's good for you to have this so when questions come up from the public. Because you will have tough decisions.
Right, you can clarify on what's added to general fund. And it looks like everything is kind of going up a little bit, then um, the district support services, we go from fourteen hundred fifty thousand seven thirty-two to over to a million nine thousand five sixty-six. Why we have to jump maybe fourteen and fifteen?
District support services, um, what happened on, that's a great one, what happened, what Lindsay? Um, the state opened the door to have, um, and, and you'll see this at the statewide level for everybody because, um, we're able to code on special ed, and there's certain things that we're able to run through. At the state level, we can't get reimbursement on benefits. Okay, only salary. But when we move it with federal, we can. So some of this is an accounting change. So that's why you see such a drastic, it's not that we made, you know, I think everybody's well aware, we did not add eight hundred thousand dollars worth of, of support people in one year's time. But it, it was a change that they wanted for coding purposes. And we, we run into this on the tech side. Right now, um, they're making us do the same thing. Uh, all of Jake's stuff in technology has been completely recoded. So you see it statewide at least, that's, that's the good thing. When we're comparing apples to apples, it'll be the same thing for every other district. As they do that. And it's one of the reasons that the fiscal fifteen stuff isn't, hasn't been up yet for comparison. So like you noticed the statewide, I had just fiscal fourteen was the furthest. So it'll be coming, but good question. Any others that kind of? You just surprised or, or again, just for clarification if you have it. Okay, um, so the things legislatively, we know that two and two is on the governor's plate. Um, the senate ed finance committee, the chair, um, also is talking about a two and two. The target from the senate though, the two and two on the, on the senate is like three hundred and seventy thousand would require. And I think the target from the senate is only three hundred. Not three hundred and seventy million, and I think it's three hundred million that is their target. So that's going to be hard unless they make changes, which they'll negotiate. You have the governor's budget, seven hundred and so, they'll negotiate. They, they do that all the time, but realistically, we are, realistically, we should be seeing a two and two. That's realistic. More than that, no way. No way. And I think you see that if you've been keeping up with M R E A and, and the M S B A stuff. Two and two is about as good as we can hold for. Okay. Financial. Anita. World's best workforce. Principles. Five areas, world's best workforce. Five areas, all students ready for K, all students third grade achieving grade level literacy. C, all of principals will talk about, the Aspen's team will talk about closed achievement gap and what they are, ask them whatever questions. D, how good are readiness and E, all students graduate. So that's, the last two are six, twelve. First two are, are K five work, elementarys, and C, as I said, pretty much everybody. So, principals, you have.
I'm sorry, I didn't get one. I had a chance to meet some of my friends, but I don't think we were just longer. Um, just do longer talking instead of.
Hang back here.
Very good age, meaning that, uh, first of all, they were two thousand fifteen. Came off, were done very well, good start, and. The meeting being. The lady had a son, but earlier than that. And the committee being, um, all eight kindergarten teachers. It would be, it was Christie couple. It was for Van and Baras, um, or Talbot and Jerry Crump, Baras, C C, Cassie. And the, the committee has the task, gather of transition planning. Transition planning for our district for the next three to four years. With that, it would be happening during that transition planning. And then we really look at the nice job that her title has done with her family and all, and the parents involved, and thought that we would like to be able to continue. We know that the, that primary, I think it was forty-four. And does that do, does that seem about right to everyone's, um, training? Pretty much, yeah. Um, you know, so we're taking a look at, we've talked about what makes schools successful, no matter what level we're at. Is first of all, relationship building with families and parents. So one of the first activities that we should look at, realizing that that transition from either from the childhood setting, um, daycare setting, head start setting, or at, or home, that that transition to kindergarten is one of the child's most important transitions to look at. So looking at transition planning, what can we do? Our first activity, and I know that, um, this spring, we'll continue our kindergarten roundups at both sites. So the committee proposed, and you see it on the calendar for your discussion next week, taking those first two days of what would be regular school for first through twelve, and setting up an alcohol launch lot with parents and kids and families to first of all, make that connection. Your teacher, there's the room, there's the table, here's what our year is going to look like. And also take part of that time to assess the child so that that kindergarten teacher kind of has some good background in where he or she was at. Whether there's a day half the time, part of the time, you know, that, but that connection with the family and the students. Do we have a back to school line? We do have a back to school line. And do we remember that it's new to kindergarten? That all have, all are forty-five minutes. Do we believe in the M and L, no time to present? Do we offer another, um, opportunity for families and parents to come after the year starts? Yes. But our proposal for discussion from the committee, um, for Monday night's board meeting is to take those first two days. Do we realize that there's disadvantages? Do we realize that one of the things you'll have to discuss would be that we know that that means two days of possible childcare for our families? And, uh, you have to do your assessment part. So as we look at that transition planning, that's one thing we're looking at. The assessment, if you're reading into the, or the world's best workforce, currently our assessment is being measured for K and the fall, little dogs are literacy. Of course, all, it's a computer desk, it's still on, um, you know, I could give you the data from this ball. If we look at, um, filler elementary, forty-nine percent met the benchmark. And the elementary thirty-five met the benchmark, and I could add for the last two years to, um, I'm sorry, I can't, can't remember reports as a district by seven. You know, so what does that tell us? It might tell us that they've been exposed to the computer. And I could see his, um, screen, you know, on the desktop, going like this. Know what type of devices that they've been exposed to. So, another look at what the committee needs to take a look at, what assessment we look at. Since we have handwriting without tears, the committee has taken a look at taking parts of that, or literacy, and, and giving that. But also we think we'll look at doing research, what's out there. Um, in a court task, we know, we know we've talked about retention. You know that in order to be in kindergarten, you have to have three requirements, five by September first. And we have to have screening. In theory, right? And we have to have screening. And that's the beginning of the latest requirement of the company's subject of the block. Those are the three requirements. So those are the word for primary, you know, that why did we see increased attention? Are teachers doing a lovely job? Absolutely not. You know, in fact, in fact, if the office sitting at the table would say, our best assets are the people who are working there with kids. For me. Um, we have families that are sending kids, you know, they are alive. And in their real world, it's cheaper than daycare. Uh, that is one reality. Um, we have kids that are coming with handicaps, but we won't put them together. We have kids coming with language difficulties. We have kids coming that are not eating at all in the bathroom. You know, hanging out there, sun up in their locker. Um, so, uh, obviously a big task about maybe being, um, D G F schools. What do we do with kindergarten program for that class, or for the toy class of kids? That includes the three requirements that I stated in the slogan. But yet in our regular school, what can that kindergarten room look like for that, for those kids?
Board members, do you have questions, any? On that side?
So what does that classroom look like, that you would have for the students? Because I, I, I am early childhood myself, and I know exactly what you're talking about. So what would your ideal classroom look like?
One of the tasks of the committee, um, to do some, to do some research and what that, and. It would look different? Um, we don't know exactly yet. That is one of the big tasks that is there.
The need is, the need is there.
Pardon me?
The need is there.
The need is there.
Any other on A, on four eight?
What were the first two days, man? And we talked a little bit.
The first two days is cool. It's set up now or slot.
What were the business break in office days like that?
With, with the parents or the families, guardians or families, because they all have the parents' days. And time with the teachers. Part of it doing an assessment, so the teacher knows what the child's have. But that may part of the management of the plan on the students. Here's our room, here's where your child's going to be, thank you for your time being on the class. And after a few years, it's a little bit.
And again, they're kind of limited on their options with it because, you know, the amount of days contract wise that they're going to do it. So right, again, there isn't an issue about the amount of hours. We're well over the minimum requirement. So you don't have to worry about student content. But you will, as board members, potentially get phone calls from parents saying, okay, now I've got more daycare. And so I've got to take time off from work to go make this meeting. And I've got half an hour of meeting on my student, my son or daughter being screened, and then I, you know, so you're going to get those.
Right, I, I get that, but we're also looking at the best interest of the kids in our district, and that would be the best interest of the kindergarten district.
And see, see, I'm not, I'm not, I, believe me, just for the work session, I'm just saying, I'm not yay, nay, whatever. It's just, these are the realities. You know, and as long as you're comfortable with it, Monday you vote on it and you, but it's a time if you've got any questions, concerns to ask now, because they're here. So the what ifs and what else, and I, you know, I can tell you that you have no issue as far as on amount of minutes. We're well over that. No issue. So that is not going to be an issue on funding. It's not a funding issue. So if you're, if you're clear on what they're requesting, what does it fit on to be?
So if this, by chance, didn't work out this year, obviously it can be changed back again next year.
Just for the one year calendar. And you got negotiations coming up and, you know, uh, you know, I'm a component of, of looking at, you know, personally, trying to get more staff time. You know, I, I mean, I personally would like to see, you know, we've got a hundred and eighty day contract with them, not necessarily that, necessarily more contact time with kids, but more professional development time. You know, that's one thing that I, and again, so that, you know, can that potentially? Is there a possibility down the road year two that, okay, there's a monitor on the situation, adjust it? What if all of a sudden there is a change in the amount of contract days? Again, negotiations, but this is a work session. It's just all the what ifs. What if you have that availability of a couple more days? What if the elementary principals could have at their site leadership meetings saying, primary? We're going to use days, how do you want to use it? Intermediate, how do you want to use it? Middle school, how do you want to use it? Some of it could be, we're going to have online availability for professional development for every employee of the district. I know Morehead did some of that, where they had so much time for the afternoon to go in and hit these different components. You know, we could do some things with that. So this could be one of those, you try it?
What is your feedback been from kindergarten teachers so far as far as taking those first two days and?
The recommendation came from the committee.
Okay, there.
Where it's largely.
And they're wanting to try this and?
Yes. Now, there's been, the other thing that I should add, is taking that, um, practice sessions. Um, you know, that all of them have, where there were a number of days of that two days. And everybody's finished, they've been wonderful, you know, um, and then we just did a phone call regarding, I think regarding could, uh, be taking a look at, if it was springing stuff. You know, if there's a springing setting, we'll, we'll, assessing models instead of taking that fall. The disadvantages that, you know, banana boxes on the spring, so it's not necessarily going to be that connection. Sure. You get the assessment, it's not that many of the people in the house.
There we go.
You guys good on the info? Okay, uh, B, so third grade achieving grade level literacy.
So we measured that by the N S A, by the N S A results, just dating the summer of us. And last year was sixty-two point six percent were at the beginning. I think the bigger, the bigger would be whatever we do to improve that amount, that is our, that's our initiative, that's our kindergarten initiative. So we start about a half. So we start about a half with the committee that started two years ago. Any members of that out there? It's been a long and a very committed and a very wonderful process. You know, and it's just taken us in the board's support of what we've probably been able to do that. So to me, it's the confidence of the committee that has started with it. And that's great, with the grade level route from each site from each grade. It has the principals, special education route, EL route, and then interventions. And then we combine that with contracting with Kerry Hayes for the saves that we have. You know, where you could lead the process and lead the discussion and bring in other vast knowledge and research. And again, you know, she saw that like restricts the real nation so far as to be able to have or do this process. They're wonderful. Your support for the literacy coach, as we initiated that in my head, in that operation, we got two done. To be an possibly ongoing intervention. People call it side one, I'll leave it at that one, but interventions. Glenn and Deb and Lori and Lori and Amy. That makes us a non-homeland. I think with the way that you're starting, establish like those core values and beliefs. And then in one month, I have copies of people working to, if you need to remind you about established in most of the areas of our core values and beliefs is our literacy. And have a map, draw our decisions at our best for kids. And we've rolled out, we give us a study, we have a three-year learning communication plan. That everyone is well aware of expectations. And with your support, we embedded the practice development that is lacking in some past work. And we embedded from the very beginning to monthly, grade level district-wide means. Back this week, we have our update, grade level means. That continued the PLC work. The district, the development of the rubrics for staff. And we look at it for different comments as we enter the study, so that they know what what the practices are and what we need more. And then we start to talk this weekend, our training, rolling out the minimum curriculum framework in all the different areas, so that that's consistent to grow for all the parents.
Questions on B?
The results you have were from last year's third grade. Of course, I'll issue with monster, fantasized, third grade, more relationship.
And all of the time, just because we have, the district's got a chain to every area. It's not a common force to put out. We won't open the MTA results until that's what we're going to have.
We can well, it's last time we did it, we will. We really will.
Can we say to staff that this is happening before we get into this subject?
Christie Petville has been phenomenal in her role too. She has really stepped up and she does a fantastic job. Kind of leading the district in that area.
Is she still teaching or just doing this for the rest of the year?
And the plan is, I believe the recommendation is, is to keep it in that rule. And that's something that we've talked about for quite a while. That when we did this, this was not going to be a one and done. Because the needs will still be there as we continue implementing. Similar to, when you think about we have the tech integrationist. You know, the technology isn't going away. And the needs and the new staff members and what else now. So we've embedded that into what we do. And I agree with what Joe said. Christie is, she's doing a bang up job with it and and spending a lot of time, a lot of hours.
So that's what I'm going to do, that I do have Christie on, what's here?
I was able to see the new literacy picklem in place. I stopped in one of the elementary schools between a dentist appointment and saw Lori Kraus implementing that in her classroom. And it was very fun to see how they actually were interacting and the thought process that they had to do to come up with the answers that they had to come up with. It just made it more concrete for them. So and, but I've had conversations with others that have a little concern as far as some of the content. You know, that it might be a little bit over their head with what they're trying to teach to. So it's not a hundred percent, but you know.
Is there a hundred percent why, is that a percent?
Pardon me?
A hundred percent of the reason?
Right, there's just some questions on some of the pieces and, you know, but they're working through that and they're going to develop.
Have you had a third one?
Yes.
If they, we went and worked, we were able to see that, but that's a hundred percent. And then we'll go back and see what's out with the Spanish kids in there. But then just seeing that either.
See on the closed achievement gap, that's something that we have to identify at all levels. So if we could get some insight, elementary, middle school, high school, when are the top priorities as far as that you've identified at your site levels?
At the elementary, we have goals for reading app or office. But then where we need to close that with a free reading system set up. Both in that, then reading, we have in the bot app. And I think that reading is, is, you know, my daughter and I love reading, so that. Math, you know, Lori and Miranda are ABMR nationally, national trainers for, for ABMR and and who's not, that's a district, don't math training, who are new staff for our companies, this is a third year now. But our site did approve for Lori to do the training. They included our special ed staff in that training. And we took that, a little, a little part of the reading app. The math. So I guess a couple of things that I said. I could have a goal as anyone, but.
We got a fun math line that was put on. Got us talked in on that math. The way that those kids could figure out how to make, you know, groups of numbers by just quickly looking at them. I, I was, it was very fun to watch some of the stations that they had set up. That was, that was very, it was very hands-on. Yeah, yeah, I was hearing her say that that night, but I mean, it was kind of funny because, you know, you watched some of the parents and the kids were like digging in there and doing it, and the parents were like stepping back like, oh my heck, did you just figure that out? But the kids weren't afraid of it and they just went. It was a good night.
She want to order?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
So I will go next and I am going to ask Brian's permission kind of to cover C, D, and E with, if it's okay with my goal sheet I hand out? I'm not sure.
As long as I'm not the one doing it, I don't care.
Okay. So with the middle school, we really, as you can imagine, A and B were interested in, in those areas, but we're responsible probably more for the C, D, and E area. And what I just handed out was our goals for two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and I guess you could underneath those probably put our objectives and our, and our plans. And we really focused on three things this year. And it's kind of one, the first one, which has been implementing that middle school concept for the success of our students. That's been something that we've been working on for, okay, I think for, this is my fourth year, so I think five years the district has been trying to focus and implement the middle school philosophy. And there are different components of the middle school philosophy, but some of the things that we are, kind of drive us is the scheduling. One of the things that we have been able to keep, and it is challenging with sharing a very, building with a very tight schedule with elementary, but we've been able to keep our common prep times for our grade level teachers. And that is really helpful to them. They will tell you that it not only helps with the mentoring of the new teachers, but it really allows us to be student focused. They have PLCs that they meet every two weeks and during that time, they're not only talking about instruction and, and supporting each other in that area, but they're also really focusing on student needs. It's a time that we can have multiple meetings with parents and we can get the group together, sit around with the parents. Maybe we're seeing a change in a student's success in school and being able to pull them in and, and help and come up with a plan. That is, that happens multiple times across all three grade levels. The advisory program, that is something that really should focus on relationships with the students, forming relationships with their teacher, but also with that be the point of contact for our parents. And it's interesting because I had a reflection probably about a couple of weeks ago, how many more of our parents are reaching out to those advisors first and asking, connecting them. Because as we grow, that's going to become more and more important. You'll see advisory as being something important in especially larger schools because they don't really know who that contact person is, you lose that home room. When you're in fourth grade, you know who your home room teacher is, you know who you should talk to. And advisory is kind of like a home room, that's the go-to person for those, those parents. Exploratory, we want to continue to offer our kiddos the opportunity to explore different areas with the tech ed, the art, the facts and some of those, those areas. Intervention, what we have used our rebel power hour time for, sometimes more, sometimes less, is an opportunity for us to identify needs of our students and offer some intervention time during the school day. At its best, what it has been is we have had a rotation with the five content areas and one day a week is a priority day. So maybe on Tuesday for seventh grade is Todd Burgerson's priority intervention day. So he's able on those days to maybe look and think, oh, there's these eight or nine kids that I would really like to see because they've missed school. They're not understanding a certain concept, I really think that reteaching them could help. And then being able to continue that on. Sometimes because of time constraints and other things, we haven't been able to do that, but that's our ideal for doing that. Other times it becomes a time when teachers can reach out to the different students and, and assist them. Maybe it's because they've been gone or multiple ways. Enrichment, we would love to grow this more. I guess the biggest example I have for enrichment is probably our Mrs. Hopper and Mr. Will do our arch program, our art club through community education. And if you've spent in the middle school classrooms and I was able to show some of the board members this last week, we have tons of murals going up all over and it is so fun to see it just growing into this warm inviting, student-friendly, and they own it, they've done it, they sign their names and they're pretty excited about that. So we really wanted to make sure that we, we focus on and providing more opportunities like that. And we've also done the Lego club, which wasn't for elementary, but they did do it in the middle school. And that was an opportunity for some of those kids to see Mr. Will, and I think Mr. Will really liked it. So maybe he'll be able to continue that on with the middle school too. So we've partnered a lot with Tracy and Community Ed and hope to just grow those opportunities. Because we have a lot of kids in our athletics, but we'd like to see more kids that have other interests have more opportunities. Our counseling program, I can't say enough about our mental health practitioners. They are amazing. The middle school years are full of adjustments. For lack of a better word, and they, some of our kiddos really struggle and they need that support during the day. And a lot of our parents need help in connecting with outside resources or even a check-in during the day. And we are lucky to have one full-time mental health counselor and then we also share Katie Omen, who does a lot of career and academic, but that really can evolve into some mental health counseling also. Along with the counseling program, exploring, they are in charge of the advisory program, they work with academics. One of the biggest things that Katie has done is she has students referred to her, they need some academic counseling. So she will take them and she will go to their lockers and open up a middle school locker, boys or girls, and you can see papers flying all over. And she'll go in there and she'll teach them how to organize and how to put things together and, and say, here, go turn in these seven assignments to Mr. Burgerson. Your grade will go up. And just kind of go through some of those things and, and teach them. So she's been really helpful with that. Goal number two, increase career and college ready through student programming and professional development opportunities. Probably one of the biggest things that happened for us this year was we were lucky to be involved in a STEAM grant. And some of you have heard us talk about this, but for those of you that didn't, there was six plus myself that went to Lakes Country, I think the first time was in August this summer. And we started on a STEAM journey. And it was absolutely amazing. Our teachers, along with having trainings at the co-op, they also all went out and did internships in, in the community. Some of them were top secret, they couldn't tell me too much about, but others were, they, they were able to bring that in. And I wish, you know, there's Kimberly, but Kimberly did something along in her area that, that she can see how language arts that, that could apply to students working in the career area. So it was, it was really a good experience. We did have, along with that, we've had continued support through Cultivate twenty-one, which is a company by Molly Bestji. She's come in and done some additional training, professional development with all of our staff. And then also, remember I talked about that common prep time and that teaming? They've been able to take that and apply it during that common prep and team time. So for example, Mrs. Wally, Mrs. Spitzer have done APBL project-based learning and they have been able to take that and, and, and share that with the other, with the other team members in the seventh grade. One of the things that we've been really focusing in is also on, from my request for my proposal this year is AVID. We have, we, I went to AVID last summer along with Katie Omen and there was a multiple high school staff were there and we were very excited about what could it bring to our students at DGF. So we have been exploring that this year. There was four or five of us that went over to Horizon about a month ago. And we were able to spend some time with Jeremy, he's a principal over there, he was amazing. He spent a lot of time with us explaining to what they've seen, how it's important for their school. We got to go into a couple of classrooms. It was, it was a good experience for us. Ramp up to readiness, Katie Omen organized the whole year for our staff. Kids are getting that on Mondays, that's a career readiness program that we have at DGF. And then again, that counseling program has supported all of those opportunities. We also, goal three, which is the MMR, which is what we're rated on by the state. We, it's levels of proficiency in student achievement, so there's MCAs that, that Peg was talking about. Reducing the achievement gap in our areas, special education where we need to reduce that achievement graph gap. And then increase our percentage of student growth in all areas. And so we really believe that all the things we're doing in goal one and goal two are supporting those areas. In addition to that, we have offered our teachers to go to different professional development opportunities. People are encouraged to go to things that they're interested in. They just bring it to our site leadership team, we look at how much money we have, how much it's going to cost, is it tying with our goals, with what we think we need? And then we are able to support those. We also had teachers go to TIES because we were the first building or site or area to do the one-to-one initiative. And so we want to continue to support that and support our teachers and their technology, education. And so we did send, I think, five or six to TIES. Remember, we're very interested in middle school philosophy. There was four of us that went to the middle school, Minnesota Middle School Association Conference. I think that was in December. We're hoping to send a group of us to AVID. And then again, those individual, like Katie D'Amico went to the music, elementary music conference not too long ago. So when we look at C, D, and E. So when we look at C, D, and E, because we believe, as we all are, that it's not just the high school's responsibility to make sure our students graduate, but all the things that we do, okay, getting a good base in reading and writing, us helping get some of these other skills, supporting kids through that middle school time, which is tough, and then as they go and get in and ready for high school to be support, um, to support them in those skills and strategies that they need to be supportive, or to be successful in high school. So those are, that's kind of a summary of our year, and I'm probably missing something, but that's what I have.
Can you see the guidance counseling part coming out a little bit?
Yeah.
Questions on those?
Means I talk too much.
It's an important one. What are you guys anticipating as far as, as you look at down the road with, uh, you know, over the next few years on the college and career readiness in particular? What do you, five years from now, operating, what else kind of besides the Avid?
What do we see?
Hmm.
We would, we would like to see more STEAM opportunities for our kids. I believe they are so engaged. Um, it's one thing I forgot, our teachers have been so awesome about that. We, uh, took our eighth graders to, uh, Intro to Girl to Engineering Day. Our girls went to NDSU in the morning, and they did a STEAM activity, and then in the afternoon, they went over to Microsoft, who is incredible host, by the way. If you can, they, I guess on Fridays, they, they will do tours if you have a group of kids. They are very supportive of our kiddos. And then our boys, we had, um, more engineering, I think it was, came in and did activities with our boys in Mrs. Hopper's classroom. And we're hoping to take our boys over to Microsoft yet this year too. We've had your hired days, just the multiple different things that we're trying to bring into the classroom. So things that we can do that to get our students ready for those jobs that are going to be out there someday, so they have some exposure.
So those kiddos are ready?
Yep, so they're ready.
Do you have anything there?
Well, we have, yes, a STEAM grant is, well, okay, we finished the obligation, but we hope it's not done. Because we, uh, we have, next Tuesday, we have one day left with Molly. Where those six teachers that went to the training, they have, they've been able to take a full day to work on their PBLs. And I think next, I think it's next Tuesday, it's coming up soon, um, where they have one more day with her, so. And we haven't heard if any, anything else that's happening with them, but if, we'll keep our eyes open. Because they, that was a wonderful opportunity that the co-op offered to us. We were lucky to be selected with us, Fergus Falls, and Rothse.
And I think one thing, just to tie into that that's exciting, is that we're starting to see a little more crossover in both interests and staff members availability for each other between the two schools and sites. You know, so we see more department planning, or at least some conversations of growing that student experience together. And, um, knowing kind of what's happening in the other site and, and some of the journey that's being taken, um, taken on by some departments who need to do a little bit more alignment, step back and unpack those standards again, take a look at where we're placing things. Um, along with that, planning and ordering and Peg, you know, we've learned a lot and, and Joe from your experiences too with the literacy piece, um, just in framing conversations and, and developing protocols for these important conversations. They don't necessarily look the exact same, but it's influencing our decision-making. And I think that just comes through good communication from both of those sites, or all three of those. Um, as we take a look at our MMR results, the one thing in addition to what Heidi said, um, impacts a student's, um, or a system at the senior high would also be graduation rate. We've kind of gone with the standard. We hope to grow this by five percent each year. Um, this is a remarkable cohort that, that excelled across the board in a lot of things, but I think we do see some trending information that looks similar for the other groups coming through. But we went from like a sixty-eight percent to a seventy-five percent in growth, and in the state of Minnesota, it's pretty phenomenal, um, scoring, this going on there. Um, again, that was a pretty competitive group. We have some parents of those students in the audience today, I think, and, uh, they're a, a great, great, again, competitive but supportive group to watch go through our hallways. Um, the next area is far as taking a look at, um, meeting in a measurable way. Um, the, the, um, career and readiness piece would be that addition of Katie to full-time. And she is really making an impact across the two buildings as far as pulling students in for that, those planning purposes and support. Um, our graduation rate over the last few years, I'm just starting out with, um, two thousand twelve, we had ninety-five percent. Following year ninety-six, ninety-four, ninety-eight, ninety-seven. Those are almost unheard of numbers as far as, um, exiting kids, no matter what the size of your district is with that amount of success. Um, both the positive programming and what we're offering, I guess, for all of our students to consume won't be nearly what it is, and I'm going to go back to kind of what Peg had mentioned about relationships. You don't have these kind of graduation rates with, um, an apathetic group. You have a group of very caring educators that know our kids. And it has been fun to be in a variety of sizes of districts that I've been in over the last, um, you know, fifteen years of my life. But, uh, the one impact I can say about the teachers here at DGF High School is they know their kids. They have relationships with them, they know how to hold them accountable, they know how to absorb those students in crisis, but still have, um, a high level of expectation for follow-through. Um, they talk amongst each other, they notice the, the teachers visit, and, and who, who knows what's going on in this world? And as we're absorbing some of those important events that students have when life happens, all the way, they're, they're being watched and communicated with as well as their families. So again, it's not just the programming, we have some great stuff going on in wonderful classrooms, great educators. But without that extra, um, care to, um, attention and high expectations and relationships with students, um, I don't think you'd see all these moving parts, um, work as well as they do together. We have other offerings and placements as we, as we take a look in the future. I think one conversation I hear in multiple areas, whether it's singleton classes, smaller departments like business or, or our regular content areas, will the students that we're not reaching right now? And as Brian asked that provocative question, what will we look like five years from now? I would say we're going to need to target in on some of those students that we don't have as many offerings for, whether it's through regional support, those kids who are, or in local, um, programming. How do we effectively reach those kids that aren't necessarily your four-year college students as they exit our hallways? Are we preparing them to be successful in a two-year program or directly going into the workforce or apprenticeships? Um, what are we doing academically, technical reading and math, in order to get them more proficient to be able to interact with the, um, the type of careers and college courses that they're going to be taking? So those are some of the things as we take a look at how we're being successful now. Is that translated to all students? Well, I think we do a pretty good job, but I think we're missing both an interest and aptitude level as well as opportunity for some of our kids as we, um, as we look at preparing the best curriculum we can over the next few years as well. And as we expand, this is a great time to have those conversations.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit more? Because I, I see such emphasis on the STEM STEAM, uh, but where are those jobs right now? They are in your, your labor, they are in your electricians, your plumbers, your, uh, I mean, your mechanics. I mean, this is where everybody's retiring in those fields, and everybody's been shoving these, I'm sorry, shoving these kids. Sit behind, I'm sorry. But this is not where the need is right now.
Right. I was, just in the last probably two years, I know five great examples of kids who tried to make it in a four-year program, because that's what they naturally thought, this is where I should be. This is a tradition of either my family, the expectation of my community. And I've met with at least four or five, again, since, um, the winter of last year. And they've, they're all sudden their apprenticeship in, in plumbing, or they're working with a heating and cooling system, um, learning on the job, or they just decided to regroup. Those are some of those programs, like you said, are offering more immediate opportunities for our kids. But are we guiding them in that direction or allowing those conversations, allowing that percolation occur?
And that's why I don't see us doing that.
Right. And that's where I say, as we grow, those are the kids we need to target. Um, and, um, I don't think we're the only district having that. For example, in Morehead, where they do have an alternative learning center that some of our students do benefit from as well, there's new language at the state level that allows a better relationship between alternative programming and two-year colleges. There are literally, some people, um, Tracy just asked me about the Accuplacer earlier. There's some testing that goes on to qualify you to enter into some of these programs. Um, they've developed a curriculum between Morehead, RALC, and M State to, um, it's basically a language class that they teach onsite at M State, but it embeds all the language and vocabulary that these kids will need to be successful in taking that Accuplacer. Once they do take that Accuplacer and they are successful, they're allowed to then, through those new relationships, start spending a half a day working on PSC or work essentially. And these kids, um, are further along in their programming, and some are even accomplishing that programming before they, they exit the school.
I mean, my, my, my concern is just missing those kids that are not four-year college students, but are just as smart as any of those four-year college students, but they do not have the passion to sit in at school. You cannot tell me that somebody who can go and replumb something, um, is not using their brain. They just need to find out how they can get that hands-on, because, I mean, these are the kids that are hands-on kids.
Yeah.
And I mean, it's agonizing for them to be sitting in a, in a desk all the time.
Well, they, they have aptitude and spatial awareness and problem-solving in a different capacity, but you're right. Are they offered the ability and opportunity to solve problems like that here? And I would say not as well as we could provide. Yeah, we need to grow those areas.
That's a great one, because when we do that planning with the high school, you know, if we get to a point where we're up random and bond, and what is the niche classroom space-wise, and what else than these types of spaces? You know, what do we do with the spaces to make sure that we have facilities and place to be of often? Couple other things on that same topic, uh, you know, we've been waiting all year, some more than others, uh, on the mobile lab. And again, that is not something that is ready yet. I know the Northwestern Service Co-op has already started the implementation with, uh, the STEM with mobile lab. Lakes Country, our region is not there. And, uh, I know Kip went to a meeting, um, representing industrial tech from the middle school. Um, the problem is, you know, the, the representation is a little bit more at this point. It's been a, a little bit more, I would say, uh, associated with maybe the Fergus and Detroit Lakes and some of that area and the business. Because part of it is they're, they're, they're trying to match up with the business clientele also as far as what are the needs? You know, what do you need, what do the kids need to be exposed to? So it's, it's a little bit slower process in our region, if you're wondering. If you hear things from MSBA, as far as some of that going a little bit quicker, you know, in Western Minnesota, it is, because they've already started implementing some of that with the mobile lab. So, and that, I know that one of the courses that they're looking at doing, um, through the mobile lab is welding. And of course, the welding would be, it's doing it over computer, and, uh, so it's simulation, so you don't have those issues. And I would, would guess, Scott, you've probably seen it more than any of us.
Yeah, I have.
Okay, how is, how realistic is it in comparison? Because there's some money with it.
If you're not just coming by, I mean, there are ongoing spray as well. Uh, I toured a center that does the cart, uh, oh, geez, I pronounced that bad. And I went down to tour at Olds, you know, if you go, uh, visit with their CTE director there, they're on that movement thing. You know, so they have three D printers, um, they have welder, I mean, you're talking forty thousand dollars in that alone. So that's not really that easy to justify. Um, it is actually similar welding all, of course, there's not this shape, and you're not sure any of this topic, you know? So there is like differences, but in terms of once you actually get the B ball, you know, you do have to use proper, you know, proper technique. It is somewhat realistic, but you will have to, uh, be, so what does?
So they, that is being, that will be one of the things that will be set up through that mobile lab. We know that's coming, it's just a matter of how many stations. And, uh, last I heard, there would be stations both that would be the, the computerized and the actual, whether it be, uh, um, just straight arc or whether it be gas, and, you know, not sure which ones they're going to be using, so. Okay, any other questions or any of the principles on these world, the initiatives? Or any of the what ifs coming on any of that? Next, five, six, start getting the personnel. Five and six both on the personnel piece processes are pretty similar. So license administration, licensed certified staff, we have openings. Since I've been here, this is the first time we've had, um, admin where it's at the point of where we have lead principals having movement. Um, we had, when I, I think it was in between second and third year, when Terry was leaving, we had, um, Matt was hired, when Matt was hired, he was hired as an assistant principal, similar to, uh, the level Joe is right now. Joe's linked in as an assistant principal. So it wasn't a lateral move. So when Terry's position at the high school opened up, that was the first time we had a lead principal opening here. So naturally, with that requirement that it was going from assistant to a, a lead principal, that has to be an external process, because it's not my own. Same process we go through typically when you think of all of our certified positions. In fact, I know that Peg and Joe have both sent out emails to staff. We do it annually when we have openings internally. Do people want to look at having movement, going between positions, lateral movement? We do that internally. We advertise internally first, we check to see what we've got, and once we've done the internal, and we find out what's left, and we fill that externally. The same process, we have classroom peril openings, we've had classroom teaching openings, title openings. So we have classroom teachers that will be applying for the title position, and we'll fill that internally first, and then we'll figure out what's left for the certified position, for the teaching position. Same thing administratively. This is the first time since I've been here, we've had a lead principal opening. Mr. Nagle has put in a written request to make that lateral move. Matt's background is elementary licensed teacher, um, has experience as an elementary principal. So it's a natural one for him. Him and I have had those discussions. I've met with the principals, the lead, lead principals about movement. Pretty much the same process, I'm guessing that whether it be Peg or Heidi or whomever, if you have people that are looking at making movement, people make their requests, they come to the person supervising them, and you make your decisions on who you're moving to what things. Paris, teachers, principals, same process, identical process. Okay? So again, with that in mind, the same thing I do with the principals. Unless we have requests where they're moving between sites, for instance, Heidi may have, Heidi has a, uh, a middle school language arts position, and she may have an elementary teacher. Here's an example. She may have an elementary teacher that wants the job. And Peg, Peg, it may be one of her instructors, and Peg goes, I don't want to lose that person. I want that person to stay there, they're really good at what they do. And Heidi goes, I really want that person. Now, it's multiple sites, they both want, I step into that. Okay? Otherwise, Peg comes to me with her listing every year, here's where I'm placing everybody, grade two, grade three, grade four, grade five. We do that internally. She gives me her list, I ask her for the logic behind it, because that's my job. My job as superintendent, the school board gives me the responsibility to make the administrative decisions. I have that as my job description. Coming with that, and I tell the principals this, and they heard it from me this morning, along with the responsibility comes the authority. So if Peg comes up and she gives me the listing who she's going to have in teaching, what to deal with at elementary, I ask her the questions, because that's my job. It makes logical sense, if I have questions, I ask clarification. But as an administrator, that's my job to check with her, to see if it's making sense, because that's why you hire me. Same issue here. Matt's put in a request to move from high school principalship. Matt's put in a request to move from high school principal ship. Those of you who've been around for a while know that we have teachers that put requests in. They may get hired, they have a foot in their door because they have maybe special ed degrees. Their license in special ed and elementary job opens up, they internally ask to be moved to it, and you guys don't see it. It doesn't come to you because we do it internally. It doesn't get to this point. So my plan, these are the jobs. These are the roles. This is my plan administratively for the team that I directly supervise. I'm honoring Matt's request to move to elementary. He has good background with it. He has very good background in literacy. It's going to make a great team. I already saw Peg and Matt giving each other hugs this, right before the meeting, so they will work well together. So that will be the two elementary principals. We will be looking, we have, we have needs, we have that next step on the college career We have big tasks ahead. College career readiness, I have passion for that myself because of being a former high school principal. Sandy and I have talked multiple times about this. You know, this is not a one person, a one principal thing. This is over time. Our location with proximity to Fargo-Morehead lends us to be the type that is going to have four-year college-bound opportunities for kids is easy. We have colleges right there. But we've got lots of jobs. I, you know, when I hear from the superintendent Alex about the amount of kids in the CNA programs, and it just, I cringe when I think about, God, we got Sanford, this huge place that's coming in, and we do not offer much. It's a nice way of putting it. We don't offer much when we talk about the medical field, and there's all kinds of jobs, and we know it. So we've got to get into the trades more. We have to get into the trades. We have to start lining those things up. My hope as, when we talk about visioning, my hope is that as we move things forward, that's what I want to have conversations about is what are we going to look for the candidate for that position moving forward? We've got a bond referendum, we've got to sell to the public. This makes sense for us as a community, as a DGF school district. Continue moving for what kids need for skills at the high school level, college career readiness. We have somebody at the middle level that has counseling background. We put in, the board has done a great job adding counseling support services. Now we need to make that next step with the visioning for it. So my plan is tomorrow morning, I'm going to advertise again based on what you've given me as a task responsibility. Number one responsibility, school board, hold the superintendent responsible for the administration of the school district. Number two, give the superintendent authority to measure it with his or her responsibilities. And that's what I'm going to do. And if it's going to be different, I need to know that. Because then it opens the door that we don't do any internal movement, and we open up everything externally, which is completely opposite of what we've done at para-level, teaching level. And I'm looking for consistency. I've always looked for that, to get it across the board.
So Brian, can you just help me understand why Matt wasn't moved into the position a year ago? We asked Joe to step up, did, and now, or in September, and now he's not qualified for the position? I mean, just help me understand.
Number one, Joe could not be placed into that position. He would have to, whatever the position, whichever the lead principal position is, he has to apply externally for whatever we have. So if you think of it from, let's compare it to whether it be a para. Okay, we had classroom paras that we had this year because of the third grade issues and all the kids. So what we did was internally, now we advertised for paras. However, who took those para jobs that were classroom, external or internal?
People.
And they were, so people had that opportunity. So we start internally, find out who wants to make a move. If we don't have them, that's different. But you have to do it based on a level that they're at presently, not what their license is given. We have-
Also, we looked at like what the needs were for those, like those paras and the students that they worked with, because we didn't want to move people if it wasn't a good fit and the needs of the students that they were already working with. So just because they put in a request didn't mean that they were automatically going to move either. We had to look at what was the best fit.
And that's why, for me, as far as the logic in my processing as a superintendent, when I look at the background of people, it's, you know, my first exposure, when I had a situation similar to Joe's, was a dean of students' position, and it was working with middle school kids. I'm the first one to say it was a great experience, but I'm stronger, my real house is secondary principal, as a principal. I taught calculus, I taught all advanced, a lot of advanced math courses, I worked with high school kids. College career readiness is a big thing for me, and I excelled at it in that role at Marshall County Central. Now, again, Sandy and I had the discussion like with Heidi, you know, and what, going back, you know, back when Heidi, when we had the high school principal opening, would Heidi have done well with that high school principal job? Yeah. But it's a difference between doing well with it compared to knocking it off. That is because of her counseling background. Anybody who's had kids, and I have one right now, going through that eighth grade hormone and stuff, and everything about girls in eighth grade, I swear to God, I've had more discussions with counselors this year than I have in the whole time going through school because middle school girls, some should be put under glass for a while, so. So it's the niche of the skill set that people have. Matt's a former elementary teacher. He has that background. It's a difference between having people do things, can they do it? Yes. Do I think there's skill sets that Joe has to make him a good candidate for high school principal? Yes. So I'm looking at the matchup as far as what's their background, what's their talent set, dealing with the internal. This is lateral for him. We've had a past practice, lateral, giving people the opportunity. Teachers have that, paras have that. Why wouldn't we do the same thing?
So even with a lateral move, you don't have, do you have to legally post the position?
Mm-mm. Same thing we do with the, with the teaching position, same thing. Right now, we have a retirement of somebody that did title. Peg and Joe will sit down and find out they've advertised internally, who's interested in the title position. They check it out, they find out what they've got, they make a decision. And then when it's all said and done, because we've already advertised for elementary teachers, we'll figure out what's there as far as a particular, where we place them. That's the management part. You know, when you think about everything, you hear from MSB, that's the management part. Where do you place? You don't give that away as management. How many times did you hear it? You know, that's management, where you place people.
So-
There are a lot of people that would like to be able to control that. Okay? It'd be like me being able to say, you know what? I want to be able to pick everybody who's going to be a board member that I'm going to be answering to.
But on the other hand, so the board does have the final say.
You have the vote on the hiring. Hiring, not placement. That's my comment. Correct. So what I'm, what I'm saying, Raleigh, is, what I'm saying is, the position that I'm coming forward for you as a board to hire, this high school principal.
And what I'm saying is, if we get right down the brass tacks and it comes up, and let's say for example, someone that we still want, you may have a hold of there, but the board can say, yeah, you're going to-
If the board wants to take over the management of this, you just have to let me know. And then that way, every principal request for where the teachers are at, I'll bring forward to the school board. And we'll have these discussions on the placement of every teacher, same thing.
Talking to one to one, just a one-to-one. We have a problem with one right now? If we do, if we do, on this question, anywhere, anytime, when it comes up for a vote, and it will for a contract, the board does have the right to log it out.
Sure, for the position that's open. For the position that's open, Raleigh. Make sure we understand this.
Yeah, well, now, there is a lot of confusion here, and I think that the part that people get, people have opinions, but when it gets down to it, the board hires and fires super tech. We hire them to make decisions, sometimes we like them, sometimes we don't. And at the end of the day, when we look at evaluation, so say if Ryan makes a decision, maybe another one, maybe another one, when we start evaluating this decision, we don't like that, then what do we do, Ryan?
You get a new direction, you get a new superintendent.
You get a new superintendent, you know? But when we hire a superintendent, you're hiring them to make decisions. To me, for a board, you know, we're at the shopping center, you know, shopping, we have some people working in the medical field. I'm guessing, anybody know what administrative confidence is in this room on the board? No? That's all you've got, other way. Principals. But we're, we're looking at, are we hiring principals? No, we don't want to hire. And you're right, I mean, it's-
But can we turn it-
You're right, and overall, ninety-eight percent of a job, right? Ryan, you got, okay, ninety-eight percent of it is golden. We have a disagreement with, let's say, one position that made a mark. Doesn't mean it's bad people, doesn't mean it's wrong, doesn't mean it's right. But that doesn't mean that his whole performance is, okay, I made everything to all teachers, all about, all that, that's not what we need. All I'm saying is, if we have a disagreement on one position, that's not up to us. I mean, we're all a lot of opinion, we're going to all do what we need to. Now, to throw back and say that that one position is the key to, okay, it's no good, time to go, that's not what I'm saying.
But here's, here's my point, Raleigh, that I just, again, I want to emphasize. If the board wants to make the determination of the placement of people into the levels where, not the hiring of people, you, as a school board, you hire, you figure out how many FTEs for teachers, for administrators. You have a set amount of FTEs for lead principals. You have a set amount of teachers. Where they're placed is the management. So when we get into the discussion about the board having the final say, my point is, and my question for the board, does the board want to take over the placement to have the authority? Remember, you're giving me the responsibility to administer. Are you telling me that you're taking away the, if you're giving me the responsibility, but you're taking away the authority to do that? I need to know that. If you're going to start taking the authority of where people are placed are the people I directly supervise, I need to hear that from the board.
And I'll be here and I'll be not, Kathy.
But it's important.
Well, I'm kind of confused because when we left that meeting on Monday, March sixth, Sandy asked you specifically, what position are we going to be posting? Is it Glenan Felton Elementary and Critical? And you said yes.
What are we going to advertise? Where do we start the process? What are we advertising?
Well, I was told to give it back by my, I was late at ten o'clock in the night, you know, I'm like sitting here going, oh. This is not what I anticipated.
What do we, it's, okay, look, there's, and there's confusion because of it's new to it too.
I am very, very confused.
Because of this. We do, now, again, I go back to the certified staff. Okay? You have retirements, you as a board, accepted the retirements. As a board, you don't, when we bring these candidates forward, you're hiring people for elementary positions. That's what you do, you hire them. The principals place them. Okay? So where we started with this, we had to figure out, do we have a lateral move internally? We had a request internally. Okay? If we didn't have a request, it's simple. All the principals stay there, we hire an elementary because we didn't have internal. So Lindsay, it's the same thing, it's the same process we do with the teachers.
Did Joe have any opportunity to-
He can't because he's an assistant principal. So has he at a lead, remember, you've got, you're going to have paras that have teaching licenses, that are going to apply for, for the teaching positions, but they're not currently a teacher. So they can't make a lateral move. That's a step up.
I, I mean, I understand, Brian, that you don't obviously want to be micromanaged with the decisions that you were entrusted with our school district as far as placing people to where you feel is the best fit. Now, one of my questions for you is, have you spoken with the staff in Glenan Felton Elementary to just get their opinions or viewpoints, wanting to know how this past year has gone? I just am kind of wondering how you come to this decision. I mean, everything can always, and I'm, and here's the other thing, Matt, I enjoyed my time with you in the high school. I remember complimenting you on the kids, you know, you had a good rapport with them in the hallway and stuff like that. I mean, so I'm not trying to completely discredit you and your elementary past, but I am just wanting to know, have you taken that time to speak with your staff to see what their thoughts are on?
No, I, no, I don't.
Okay.
No, I don't because this is, I'm supervising the administrator who's supervising the teachers. Okay? So this is, well, look, Dan, do we bring, do we ask, when we have teaching openings, do we bring parents and do we bring student leadership in about teaching positions? Because that's who they're teaching. They're supervising those students, and it's the parents. Do we bring in any of the community people when we have teaching openings? And again, a lot of people would say, that's absurd. It's the same thing. Because the teachers are not going to know, they're not, they're being evaluated by this person. Okay? I am evaluating the person that we're hiring and placing. So, so I mean, that's why, no, I don't directly ask, do I take, do I hear things as far as when we have the DLT meetings, see how it's going? Absolutely. I knew going into this that there would be some people, and I'm happy, I'm happy that there are staff members in Glenan Felton Elementary that thinks Joe's doing a good job. Because I would say the same thing, Matt went through the process of going from assistant to principal. Okay? If down the road, if Joe gets the high school principal job and down the road, he says, you know what, I love that group and that, and at some point in time, you know, I don't know which of the two of us will go first between Peg or I, but at some point in time, there will be another elementary opening, at some point in time. If he truly wants that down the road, he can make a lateral move, just like somebody else did, just like teachers do. So again, what you need to hear from me is, here's the logic behind it. Here's the consistency applied between paras, teaching, and administrator. I'm trying to do the same process with everyone. The same thing I ask the principals to do. Do I expect that you're going to have people coming to you? I, you know, it's like an assistant coach. I would surely hope that somebody is going to say this, if a, if a coach wanted to move from one program to another, I'm betting that there's going to be some people saying, yeah, I'd support that too. I'm happy that they're here supporting Joe. But again, that's not a lateral move for him, and he has to go through that same process.
Senior, I mean, and, Brian, what are the qualifications, characteristics, and strengths that you were looking for in a principal?
Leading. Leading initiatives, number one. And when I look at the background of people, that's what matches it up for me a lot. That's a big thing. Visioning.
Have you observed these strengths and characteristics that you're looking for?
And I'm trying to match up where they can be maximized. How many, you know, the, folks, we have lateral move requests every year that have never had this much discussion. We've had some teaching staff that have been in three different positions in the time I've been here. Why has that never come, why is- Why is that never come, why, why is this? I get it, it's different because it's, and we haven't had one. So, unless you tell me that you want to take over and change my roles and my responsibility, and I'll give it up, trust me. I'll bring, I'll have the principals bring movements forward and you can, you can, rubber stamp or not rubber stamp. It's fine. I'm just saying, if you're gonna give me the responsibility, give me the authority. Any other questions for me?
Yeah, I realize that I've probably given me a trouble for doing this, but I don't, I, I guess I don't care because I would feel you have been in our elementary, you don't know what we went through with Shannon. Joe has built an environment with us that has been wonderful. He relates to the students, he goes out to the playground. He has been so good with all of us. He's asked us as professionals, how do you feel about this? We have a community built with us again, and now we have to start all over again, and I think the role of Matt, I don't have a problem with that, I don't want to sit by that always and continue your hype. But we have built an environment now, now we have to start all over again? We, this has been tough for us. And we have worked so hard at what we do and for our students, and we have someone now that truly understands where we're coming from. And I think that you should feel comfortable and you should have respect for us to come and at least see how many are working in the elementary.
Any other questions for me, board members?
We don't confront a lot of your job and I respect your job. Um, Brian, again, we're learning, we're all learning, we all want to ask questions, but I'm going to see, I was on there today looking. Here's the role of the school board. Set vision, structure, accountability, advocacy and conduct and ethics. If we are not able to have dialogue with you and express our concerns, then we do not have a functioning board. So we will be asking questions. Whether you like it or not, whether they're hard or not. Our children, my child goes to Glenan Felton, Glenan Felton Elementary, and I'm seeing a struggle with these teachers, one of them. And they are in a good place, and you're diminishing that. Because you're not willing to go over and see what they're doing in microancestors for them in our community because of what they've been through the last year. So it is our job to ask you to go diminish that, and I won't diminish your role.
And, and Lindsay, if I'm diminishing your role, that's not my intent. My intent is to try to define my role. That's why I'm asking those questions. Okay? Any other questions on this?
You know, I've heard a lot of bottom things, well, I do. Bottom things to you. My part is, when we look at the role of the school board, you know, I'm not one regular way of, like, Matt, who had a booth, got any better. Like an Aaron Aldrin, no. But a small town where I'm from, they have a school board, another school board does, micromanage is everything. You know what your principals say they got through? Feel free to go look it up. They went through eight, around six years. Just firing through. Just firing through, firing through, because they have a micromanaging school board. I'm not saying, you know.
Do you use the other side in that direction?
I think some of us, yeah, I do. I believe some, some people, no matter what decision is not a board. Whether I decide to support it or not, or, you know, we, Brian, you know, reevaluate everything, that's, you know, that's his job as a manager. But once again, when, if it's proven that he makes this decision and it doesn't work out well, that's, that's a big notch, that's a, that was a poor decision, because it's something that we had time to work session to air up. People expressed concern, he expressed, you know, concern, he expressed concerns, a lot of people expressed concern privately. You know, most of us knew about this Friday morning.
It's not, it's not, it's not.
It's a problem, Scott, that we're now receiving the same information at the same time.
Well.
Well, I gave it out.
Well, somebody gave it out, somebody gave it out at seven thirty in the morning.
Okay, I talked to Sandy, but I didn't give an official email till last thing at ten o'clock in the morning.
It's because I bet with Sandy, again, yesterday, for about what, an hour and a half, Sandy?
Some people might need a little more time than process.
But again, yeah, and, and again, I'm not asked, you know, I'm not asked for the board to take action. I assume this was my role and responsibility.
And at the same time, the board's responsibility is to the community and staff and, no, 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 I've been hearing, oh, a lot, we forgot, we forgot. That's our responsibility. What kind of management are we in? What kind of management from here from this side? That's what it is, okay? Along with the whole school plan. So. I don't think this is cut out Brian as everybody knows. In my opinion. You know what I'm saying, I support, I was just saying this. You know, first, we put in a position, make this decision. You may not know, this is the answer. This is one, this is one position, you know, we go right ahead and hire teachers and hire janitors, that means this is one thought. The elementary is a good place to let it out. If the name will don't fix it, that's what I think. Let's move on. You be your own.
Correct. Number six, certified positions. So these have been advertised internally. They're on the website, um, I cannot tell you offhand, it's, it's on the website as far as the date, I think it's three weeks we put these up for, for all the certified positions and then, so that'll be some time in, what positions are actually um, left, have to go through the internal process. Again, that's why I put presently. We know that FACS will be, you know, we don't have extra people with FACS licensure. Uh, we have people at five twelve and we have people at the K six that have licensing in language arts. And special ed. So without any of the requests, notice, you already have two special ed positions. We have two point one right now without any others. On Monday night, you're gonna be dealing with whether you approve expansion.
And my two for special ed are people who are, who have resigned at the end of the, for the end of the school year.
So you're replacing?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Yep, and the closing date was last Friday, the seventeenth. And as of right now, I have seven applications for special education and calling to get interviews set up. I went to a different meeting last Thursday and there were all kinds of superintendents and special ed direct, directors from around the region. And everyone was kind of chitter-chattering about positions that they have to hire, so um, we're working on getting interviews set up for next week, so hopefully we can get people hired before they get hired in different districts.
And my two positions, the FACS and the sixth grade, they're both moving.
Okay.
So it's not that we lost to various schools. You know, if that, and, you know, because that's been out there before, that, you know, why are people leaving? And, you know, these are people moving. Um, so, you know, we're well aware that FACS position, family consumer science is not gonna be an easy one. I don't know how many apps we'll get, we'll have to play that one and see. I'm sure Heidi's already checking emails constantly. So, um, so those are existing. Now, again, we've advertised on the elementary positions in general. This is where we come into that issue about, do we have three sections or two sections? At Glenan Felton Elementary. Because all of a sudden, we don't have as many openings. It's advertised just that we have elementary openings. Okay? So, we got elementary openings. Whether we end up needing to replace the fourth, the title, you know, whether somebody else moves in one of the candidates, if we don't have internal that's looking at the middle school language arts, we'll have those, but we could go from three to two on FTEs in cases two sections have. But again, you have lots of decisions. Do we look, we'll get into this discussion in a little bit here, you know, do we look at, do you want to change the numbers? The ratios for third grade, for, you know, for elementary in general. So. Alright, so those are the existing, again, those you've already accepted as far as the resignations. You have in your packet the positions on program expansion. So I would ask the different people involved, starting with Heidi, to just answer any questions you may have or, and, and her to just give a summary as far as what, and again, I think Heidi's already hit this a little bit with the board at the last meeting, when she did a report. But if there's anything you want to add, Heidi, or if there's any questions that you guys have for Heidi on this, and then we'll just walk through all of these.
Well, Matt and I did our presentation a couple of weeks ago now, I think, already on Avid, and so I think we filled you on what Avid is about and a little bit the process that we've gone through, so I guess I really don't want to take up more of your time explaining it unless you have any questions for me. That's the proposals I came through through our site leadership team.
So you guys are comfortable with the info that you got on it, so for Monday, okay, cool. And again, we don't know where, room wise and all that yet, and allow us to work. Got some ideas, but again, we gotta wait until we find out from you as a board what things may change. Okay? Next ones.
Um, I have three, so, and I've talked about, um, filling, asking for another one point O FTE for speech language pathologist. We increased by point two, um, about a month and a half ago. And, um, our numbers are still very high compared to the average within our region. And so, looking at, um, filling another position with that. And currently, we have fifteen, no seventeen evals for speech that are happening right now that the speech teacher said those students are going to qualify for speech. So we have the numbers that we currently have, plus we have seventeen more kids that are qualifying for speech. And we still have two months left to school, two and a half months left to school to talk, you know, to evaluate other students as well. Um, not sure where we'll put this person yet. Like Brian said, that'll be a discussion topic. So I don't know if you have any questions. I know, I feel like, I feel like I've talked about speech a lot already, so.
Just refresh my memory, what's the ratio, kids to teacher, that you ideally would want in a day?
Like, for, per session?
Yeah.
I would say two to three.
Okay.
More so on the two. Just because they're working on different goals and objectives and working on those different skills and you could have language skills, articulation skills. And I've observed people with three to four kids in their room and it's very busy and they're working on all those different skills all at the same time.
So that's ideal. Without, without adding in these seventeen evals, where are we at now?
For, for speech?
For ratio, yeah.
Um, well, it depends on per session, what time a student's session is. But I did break down, um, we have one case manager who, they case manage one speech teacher, they case manage twenty students. And they provide, so case manage would be the kids that are just speech students who only get speech services. And then they also provide, overall, they provide services to forty students. So because we have students who receive related services for speech and they're under a different disability criteria, so there's a different case manager for them. And that person is doing two evals. And that person works at Dilworth Elementary, Glenan Felton Elementary, DGF Middle School and DGF High School. Then we have another DGF case manager who case manages twenty. They provide services altogether to fifty-six students. And current initial evaluations that will qualify is eight. And they also, this person, um, they work with the birth to three, so they also do the birth to three evaluations, they do home visits for that. And, um, also Glenan Felton Preschool, Glenan Felton Elementary and DGF High School. And then we have one other case manager who has thirty-three on their caseload and they provide services to fifty-four. And that person has seven evals that are qualifying right now. Yep, and then that person works at Dilworth Preschool, Dilworth Elementary and then DGF Middle School. So we don't, we're a little different than larger districts because larger district, you might have, um, a speech path just like per site or um, with certain grade levels, but because we're a little bit smaller, we're spread out a little bit more with who our speech teachers are working with.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, a question just in case anybody's wondering, so the, so the board has already, has approved this year going, um, from point four to four, point, point four to point six. Yeah, we, are we looking at maintaining that point six along with the one point O?
Yes, yes, and then I would move the point six to full-time to the Glenan site, so there's more consistency, so that person isn't working between two buildings. So then we'd have one point six at the Glenan Felton site and then we'd have two full-time at the Dilworth site. So that would be between the preschool, the elementary and the middle school.
Can I help? Next one.
Um, early childhood special education teacher. Um, this one, our referrals have increased significantly, significantly over the last two years. Um, and for early childhood special ed, um, that is birth through six years old and then um, before a child turns seven, they have to have a transitional evaluation to determine if they meet categorical disability, because usually, and sometimes when they're younger, we still will do a categorical disability if we can determine that at a younger age. But a lot of times we can't, and so they'll wait until, you have to have that done before they turn seven to see if they're going to either be dismissed from receiving services, which is developmental delay, or they meet a categorical disability such as a learning disability, emotional behavior disability, um, other health impaired, um, just, um, DCD, developmental cognitive delay, just at the top of my head, I'm just trying to think of everything. So those are our categorical disabilities. So, anyway, our early childhood referrals, they're coming from Head Start, Help Me Grow, private practices, hospitals, clinics, social services, public health, daycares and from parents. During the fifteen sixteen school year, there were thirty-eight early childhood special ed initial referrals. And currently for early childhood special ed, we have one point five, um, position, which is Samantha Full right now. She does our birth to three services. So that's the home visits and taking on all those referrals. And then also she works with kids at the Glenan Felton preschool. And then we have Carrie Krebs, who's the point five. She's a full-time teacher, but the other half of her position is our autism spectrum disorder consultant. And she does all the evals for autism across the entire district. And she does the consulting with the teachers. And she's the only one in our district who has the ASD licensure. And that changed about two years ago where we had to have someone with that licensure. And Carrie went back to take a few classes that she needed in order to get that licensure. Um, so our referrals have increased. So when I was meeting with Carrie and Sam to look at our numbers for next year, um, in all reality, our numbers look more so like we could increase it by point five. Reality of finding a point five early childhood speech, special ed teacher is really slim. So possibly looking at reconfiguring Carrie's position and her role and what she does right now. Right now, Carrie is our lead teacher for early childhood special education. She goes to monthly meetings um, in Fergus Falls for our region to get the early childhood special education information and share that out. And then, um, also, um, Carrie does our COSEs with, which are the child outcome summary forms to MDE. And those are done when a student qualifies for early childhood special ed. Um, they als, she also has to do those when, we have to do a transition from part C to part B. Part C is for our kids who are birthed to three years old. But before they turn three, you have to have a transition evaluation to determine if they meet part B, special education services. And you have to do those outcome summaries at that time. And then you also have to do the outcome summary if a student's moving from preschool. And then you also have to do the outcome summary if a student's moving from preschool to kindergarten or if they're being exited from services, and Carrie takes on that role with that. And then also with the autism training, she does our consulting on autism, our evaluating, and she does our STAR training. And STAR training is different than the STAR test. STAR training is a training, um, that they use with students who are on the spectrum, and it's a very specific set of interventions to work with students who are on the autism spectrum disorder. So Carrie also does that. I'm just trying to think of what else. So I, so I would move Carrie's other point five position into a position of assisting with those evaluations that are coming through birth to three. And that would be a primary role for her, and then also helping with our transition evaluations when students are going from, um, a developmental delay category to a categorical disability before their seventh birthday, because the case manager and the, the case managers in the elementary school who have the kindergartners or first graders, depending on when a child is turning seven, they have a high number of evaluations at that time, and Carrie has a licensure to be able to do that. And also because she has early childhood special ed licensure, she can help out Samantha Full with the birth to three evaluations as well. So, um, redefining what Carrie Krebs's role would be, and then hiring a full-time one FTE, early childhood special ed teacher to work with our pre, with our early childhood kids. I know that's a lot of information, there's a lot of information in this packet, so.
There's a lot of moving parts.
So altogether Carrie's licensure is our early childhood special ed, um, DCD, developmental cognitive delay, and autism spectrum disorder. So.
So you got, and and again, you you have copies of these program proposals, you've got a week to take a look at them and.
And if you have questions, call me.
Mary Ann will definitely spend the time, as you can tell, going through the details. It's well, well thought out as far as moving all the puzzle pieces. Last two, the date we're able to do, so you have copies of those, neither one of those are requiring, um, any, um, new hiring for the board to take action on. So right now the plan is that both of those positions can be absorbed by, um, looking at basically redistributing, uh, people's, people's duties. Uh, Brittany's able to have, in her schedule, have one more period available. I think you're talking about work experience, one last period, so it's just an offset. Okay, so there's one less than one, that opens up the other, and so we don't have added cost. The Avid is the same way. Matt and I spent a few hours going through the, the, uh, pre-registration material and, and looking at the fact that there is availability within schedules. Again, it's not at the point yet as far as who's going to be doing the Avid, but, uh, we've got multiple people that have gone through the training, and so they will deal with that at the site level as far as who's doing it from what department and so on. But the board will not have to look at having an added expense for these positions. Okay? So for Monday night, things being brought forward to you, for potential positions that are going to cost a bucks. Eight are the first one, seventh grade, again, that's moving us so that we have curriculum or a sixth section curriculum at seventh grade, just like we have with the sixth grade. Pretty good chance you're going to be seeing that next year with eighth grade. Putting that into the schedule, so as the following year, looking at eighteen nineteen. So we have a full-time FTE for the seventh grade, full-time, two full-times, one with special ed, which would mean four FTEs with special ed. And those of you who, I know Mary Ann is a little bit paranoid about, and she should be, we we are. It's a lot of positions for us to try to fill special ed. Okay, that's coming to you, so do you have any questions on those details for Monday? Otherwise you know who to talk to as far as the links with these different positions. Everybody good? Next, the rest, let's see, we've got the facilities, you have copies, and again, I think most of you have seen, you've got the site maps. Um, this is what the principals will be sitting down, trying to make decisions on, uh, looking at those spaces as far as what do we have available, what can we utilize, what can we change? You know, Scott asked, and he's right, as far as, you know, what do we have? How much is it going to cost to reconfigure some of these rooms? Um, and it'll be easy to go back and, oh, how much did it cost us to set up the computer lab that Dana Moffitt's teaching in? Because we had to do redesign of that. So we've got those types of numbers. Okay, so if you have questions on that, email me, we can get those numbers very easily. Uh, we've got computer labs, we know that are going to have to transition. So you've got that to consider. So as a school board, if you're looking at changing and trying to change those ratios at the elementary levels, the spaces you've got available, these media centers, the computer labs, some of them are going to be smaller, you shift some things. If you, if you approve positions to get the ratios down, then I would say if that's something that you want to discuss on Monday's meeting, have the principals come back with, if we did this, how would you place it? And then that could be something that could be brought back at the first meeting in April. Because then we at least would know on these other positions that you're going to be dealing with on Monday night. Because we need to know on those first, so we know where they're going to be placed. And then what are we going to do if you're going to, if we're going to start? And hand in hand with that, of course, is what are you going to do, you know, is preschool? And Roseanne's here to answer questions also. Is it something you want put on the docket as far as for discussion to move preschool off sites? And what is that in the plans down the road if you have a bond? Are you looking at moving it back? Is it a transition time, you know? Those are, those are heavy decisions. So, facilities have added, some of you have brought up questions before about rooms and all that, so you've got all the data as far as the maps and.
I'd like to know before we have them put forward for something, what I came up with was we have next year sixteen hundred and eighteen students plus twelve plus five. So based on that information, at last year's number of ninety-four hundred dollars, first two of the group, that gives us a deficit of sixty some thousand dollars that came out of it, correct? Now we're getting a three percent, or two percent, hopefully a two and two next year. Staff naturally is going to be an increase there as well. How much money do we have left over? Because if we're going the wrong way, then, you know, Ted or Joe or whoever to spend some time looking at some spaces, what is there wasting time, you know, and if we have zero money available? So, isn't there money available for?
Are we going to be more in the red? Yes. That's a tough.
Well, then I guess is it doable?
Is it, again, let's assume, well, again, I, it's hard to say yes or no because I don't know what you're going to decide as a school board on negotiations. You know, I mean, it's, there's a big crystal ball out here, there's a lot of factors you've got to consider. What are you going to do on negotiations? Is it going, is the one going to offset the other? Or are you going to say, we're planning for threes or fours or whatever we're planning for, and we want to look at, what if Brian? Would you bring this scenario if we planned for three percent increase and we plan for this? How bad would it be? You know, th- those are the things I'd like to be able to do as soon as they come out, the what ifs. Scott, the problem is, I can't, you know, I can give you the what if we get two and two, but we both, we all know they're not going to prove anything until May twenty-second. So that's a problem, because they won't do anything on the two and two until the end of the session. So we're in that catch twenty-two. Now you don't start negotiating, you can say, alright, we're going to plan for this, we're going to prove this. As long as we get two and two, we're going to do this. If we don't get two and two, what's the next thing it's, that it's going to affect then? What, what do you have left then to impact? And how popular is that one going to be? Negotiations on compensation. And I don't know what else to tell you on that, I mean, these are the factors. Because you know where you're presently at as a board, you know where we are financially this year. These are tough things. And and that's why I gave you the stuff that I gave you as far as the IDA information, you can see how much we spent. And, and like you just did, Scott, as far as you took the two percent, and okay, how much is that going to give us on the base aid and, and what else not? I mean, there's some things that we don't know yet is on special ed. That is a crapshoot. And I say that because we put into the revised budget and assumption on special ed, it's the one that, that is the most volatile. And that scares me. And we've seen that, three years ago, we saw a big drop in our special ed revenue that we thought we had coming in. And it was because it prorated over the summer. So our ideas reports, which are our reports on the money, were different. They did adjustments over the summer, because remember, they prorate all of that. We think we're going to get so much. So I can give you a best estimate, you know, and the, but the round numbers is the easiest as far as these, each of these teaching positions. What things do you want me to work on as far as bringing forward to you as far as, I mean, you know round numbers per teacher, per position? You can kind of see it, unless you're special ed where we get some reimbursement. You can see all that factors on, on the stuff that Mary Ann had. Otherwise, all of these proposals, um, Heidi and what else, they all worked with Cindy getting, okay, give us the FICA TRA, give us all the numbers. So the proposals have that. So think about it, what you want, I mean, you don't have to decide, it's been a long ride, you don't have to decide on how, if, if there are particular things that you want me, again, you know ballpark numbers per position, you can get an idea on that. You know the two and two approximate what it's going to be, you know, because you can see that two and two is all on that foundation aid, the basic aid. And you see exactly from our report how much money we have on base aid. So if we assume the same numbers, the same pupil units, take two percent of it, it's two hundred and some thousand dollars, extra income. Because remember, the two percent does not affect everything. And I say that for this reason also, next year might be fine, but if you've also read through the stuff coming from the feds, Title II is being proposed at a federal level to be cut. Peg, approximate ballpark numbers, Title II. So when they cut that, and right now we run Christie Pepples through that. You know, these are the things that we cannot know for sure yet. We, we work with the state coordinators, we work with our contacts to try to find out what changes may be coming at us. And give you as much information as possible, these are factors. Now, we're in good, thank God we have good reserves. You had enough on this for, for one night? Um, otherwise, you know, you got.
Can we ask the elementary principals to just come up with maybe a few different, um, floor plans or how you would place your elementary kits, um, seeing if we can just come up with a few different ways and?
Yeah. Two, like, the dream would be two grades, you know, adding two classrooms, and then, and then maybe one, if we can, if we can open the wall, and then we can get the, the solar.
Are we talking about going through, keeping, clarification, because, because I'll be working with them on this. Are we talking to keep the ratios to that particular point through grade three, grade four, or grade five?
Where we were kind of looking at, I was guessing.
Three and, three and four.
Yeah.
Three and four, okay, so basically we're looking at.
And also just three. You know, one would be a eight plus one, would be a.
The other thing that they will need to know is, is this also with the assumption that the requests of the positions that are coming forward to you on Monday are going to be filled. Because again, they need places to put those people also. Because right now there's three more FTEs that are being proposed, two special ed teachers and a seventh grade position, and they need spaces. So them putting together, or us putting together, here's scenarios, we need to know what's happening with the three. Should we plan for yes it is, or no, or think about it both ways?
I would say, I think about it both ways.
Yeah.
And just say, I don't know, I'm not quite, yeah, it's not sure, you know, or Matt, I'll do about it too, so.
Correct, and and the part of the issue is going to run in from Mary, and I, I shouldn't have, I, I don't want to speak for Mary Ann, but I know from a, Mary Ann's going to bring up the special ed issue about, you've got issues about equity as far as if all of a sudden we're not providing those services. So all of a sudden if we're not doing the special ed ones, and then we're going to change the ratios in the regular ed classrooms, but we're not providing the services special ed.
And making sure that we have space issues, I mean, that's with equity within space issues, and I've kind of talked with Brian a little bit about this. We have an MDE visit in two years, and that was a concern three years ago when they came out for a site visit. And we aren't even, we, at that time, three years ago, we didn't have the crunch with space that we do now. And it really makes me nervous about when that monitor will come out and do site visits, not next school year, but the following school year if we continue with our spaces that we have in special education right now, because they are not adequate to probably what the standards are through MDE. Just talking with other directors who have had site visits, they have some pretty, pretty good spaces, and they were getting cited on some of their space issues, and they aren't where we're at right now. So it is a very big concern of mine.
So we'll run numbers, I'll run the economics. Principals will sit down and Mary, with Mary Ann and, and the what ifs. Okay, here's what it would look like, and here's the spaces that would be, that they would need. That'll be a good, that'll be a fun discussion. Because you got the middle school also, that seventh grade position, and okay, two years from now, the eighth grade, and so on and so forth, so. We'll bring that, now, are you looking to have that for Monday night? Do you like, as a board, do you want to report on that for Monday night?
The classroom spaces?
Yeah, the classroom space options? Because we'll add it, because we're working on the agenda tomorrow. Yeah.
Yeah.
They've been looking at these rooms quite a bit for a while. It's just a matter of doing the, is, is this even feasible? So, what we'll do is add this as one of the reports for Monday night's board meeting. And then that way, because you're probably not going to take any action on that for Monday night, but at least you've got the information and you can make a decision if down the road for the first April meeting, if you want to add it. Makes sense? Okay, so we know what we've got to do with that one, getting ready? Any others as far as on spaces or positions or any of that? Um, you have copies of what was provided by Terry on um, the programming potential down the road with a bond. You have all that information timeline-wise. You've got the task force recommendations, you've got the breakdown of the task force, uh, recommendations by site in your packets. You, you've seen it, a lot of you have in the first place, so I don't think you want to spend more time on this unless you really, really want to tonight. Um, and calendar, so, uh, were there any other things on calendar that you have questions about? Because you're going to vote on that one on Monday, you know the preschool stuff. Uh, the only other change, the only other thing that's on there that's different is a semester break. Uh, no high school students on that semester break. So you've got a high school principal, you've got different people that you can talk to about that. Do you need any clarification for any of those things that are going to be action items for Monday? Calendar, these positions will all be action items for the board on Monday.
The calendar got changed because of the track night?
Say that again?
Did the calendar get changed because of the track night?
Uh, graduation, ye- yes. Graduation, um, the, the initial request, uh, so you know, board members, the initial request that was put in place was a graduation on a Friday night. Um, what we've been brought to speed on administratively from the track coaches is that DGF will be hosting next year the section meet. Saturday morning after the proposed graduation move to a Friday. Of all years, probably not to do it, would be next year. So that's why that would be moved off of the Friday. And we, we're not on Friday now anyway, so. I think those were the ones on calendar, weren't they, folks? Okay, you had a long night. Um, any board members want to set up something with me one-to-one? I'm more than happy to sit down, coffee, or what else not. And, uh, again, you've got some tough decisions coming up. We do as a disparate positions and everything else. Um, so if there's more data that you want to have at your disposal for the meetings, let me know. Sandy, I'll get ahold of you tomorrow so we can get the agenda put together. Any others? So, six-thirty, we're now.
I'm Friday when I'm not.
Dodgeball here, no, it's all you where I'm at.
Dodgeball, what about the dodgeball thing?
I said you that you might have.
Yeah?
So, and one part of the, of the brochure, charging ten dollars for, and it's on the family free night.
So, bring it again. One is, one is Dodge. One is the dodgeball for the kids, and another one is the family night. I think it's the same date.
Yes, you take the time. I have all those positive.
I'll look tomorrow. Double check.